All please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for a couple moments of silence, and that's one's for Harold Morgan, a former cafeteria worker from the elementary school, and for Richard Bashaw, uncle of school committee member Tina Zepantis. Thank you very much. So, welcome everyone. Can I get a motion to approve the bills?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second. All those in favor? Okay, a motion to approve minutes at the May 23 meeting?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second, Mrs. Chairman.
Okay. Motion to be made and seconded. Any comments or changes? Another excellent job.
As always.
As always. All those in favor of approving the minutes? Gentlemen. Tina.
Are you leaving? Are you abdicating? This is confusing. Tina, maybe we can just keep the meeting going?
Meow wanted.
Meow wanted.
Oh my God.
Jimmy, it's the presentation of the gifts.
Oh, my God, that is beautiful.
Well, it's often thought of as a thankless job, but Tina has put in nine years of service to the town and the children of this district, and we're all very appreciative of her input and constance here at the school committee and in recognition. It's fallen on her.
Speech, speech.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Oh, it's been an honor really and a privilege to serve on the school committee. I've enjoyed every minute, so tonight is a little bittersweet for me. So, I will continue to support the schools, of course, behind the scenes. I think you all know that. So, I'll be the silent head of the new marketing department, because I always speak very highly to the schools, as I should, because we've seen firsthand the wonderful district that we have here. I'll always be very proud of it.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you all.
Can you cut the cake now?
Yes, we can go out of order soon. As it were.
Everybody will get a piece of cake. Want to put that right over on that table?
Sure.
Thank you so much.
Now, clip a sec, Mr. Morrison. You gotta let him sit there.
I may not want to have any... Do you want to pause the meeting here and cut the cake, so we don't stare at it?
No, why don't you go ahead and continue, and I'll get over there and cut it, and everybody can get a piece.
We don't have a student rep. PTA, anything?
PTA.
It's okay, you're out of order.
And I thought you did, Mr. Seed. No. I don't think so. Oh, I'm sorry, it is. Yes. I'm sorry, Robert.
Good evening. Hi, um, the PTA met last Thursday, our last official meeting of the school year. We voted on our incoming PTA board. We have a whole new board. It is, the president is Christine Zenkraft, the vice president is Samantha Gamache, treasurer is Kate Morin, and secretary is Helen Kerrigan. So, we'd like to thank everyone that has been on our board. Thank you for your service. And then they will meet in an executive session over the summer and plot out the coming school year. There will, you know, the old board will be available to help them with any transition needs during the year. They're not completely left by themselves, but whatever they decide is what they decide, along with, you know, the voting from our members. And then we also have been working for a year to have author Ben Michelson come to the middle school. Came this past Friday. Outstanding. I went to the 8:15 presentation. He was amazing. The kids loved them. My kids personally came home and was like, "This guy was great, blah, blah, blah." And we had read, and I have to say, there was a big push to have the kids read some of his books, and books were available throughout the school year, and the kids really did read a lot of the books. He did a presentation on bullying and respect, and he had lunch with some of the kids. And I have to say that Christine was the one that brought it to PTA. And not only did she ask for money, but then we went and fundraised to pay for him coming. And it was the consensus that we'd like to go back to doing some more enrichment stuff. In the past, we have done enrichment, and over time, because of our budget restraints, we've had to pull back, but we'd like to see something specifically geared towards this and have it be something that is worked on every year. And it was, he was absolutely wonderful. But I have to say, you know, kudos to Christine Zenkraft. Not only did she come and ask for money, but she was more than willing to put in the hard work to get the fundraising done, to come, you know, with help from the board, from members, and all this other stuff. They had movie nights at the middle school. There was, you know, a lot of fundraising that was done, and it was a collaborative time with everyone, but it was fabulous. Onto CPAC. We met last Tuesday, and we had CES's Peg Devine from OT come as a speaker. She spoke about OT services at the elementary school, and then also gave us a brief introduction to sensory processing disorder, and answered questions at the end of the meeting, and she was fabulous. And it's just nice to see a new person in the school system that has a wealth of knowledge and is, you know, open to coming to a meeting like that and sharing their information and being so candid with parents. It was really great. And I don't think I've made it known, but CPAC has been a board of two people for like the last three years. We've had people come, and that's the thing with CPAC. We have people come, and they get the support that they need, and that's fabulous, but our board has been really low, and we actually added two more people to our board last week. So, we are now a board of four, which is great. That means more people that could help out for different events, and we hope to build on that and grow, would grow even more than we have in the last few years. So, I just wanted to pass on that great thing.
That's terrific.
Yeah. Well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Seed, is there anything for the CTA?
Nothing at this time.
I know. Mr. Superintendent?
All right, we have retirement that we knew was coming. We all ruled the day of it, but Kathy Fahey has officially sent in her letter. She will be resigning as of August 31, 2016. She's worked here for nearly 18 years, and she mentions it's been a great experience. She learned so much, except for the data part and the part test. But anyway, it's her official notice of resignation. We will be interviewing for her replacement this week. And Kathy and I have gotten together often about, you know, where we see the role going. And of course, as we've already mentioned, Barry Allison-Dreeny, I think we mentioned that last time, is retiring. So, we're really going to have a whole new technology staff. So, we hope to get people on board right away to work with Kathy throughout the summer, hopefully. As far as a resignation, Shannon Brow, Shannon Brow, the nurse at the Clinton Middle School, is resigning this year. Shannon's the one that, her fiance is in the Major League Baseball minor league system for the, I think, the Baltimore Orioles. And he never knows where he's going or where he's going to be shipped or whatever. And she felt that it was time, that she might be hanging around, but she wasn't sure. So, she thought she would, it would be best if she resigned at this point. So, she'll be leaving at the end of the year, and we will, we've already posted that position. That's Clinton Middle School Nurse. And leave of absence. Nope, I'm sorry, there was another resignation before that. Catherine McManus, Special Education Teacher in the Focus Program at the Clinton Middle School, is taking a job closer to home. I think she's going to be working for the Westboro School System. And now for leave of absence. Maternity leave for Lindsay Lawton. She is a Clinton Middle School teacher, and she would like to, she's going to be out of her position from August 29, the start of the school year, to December 5. And she is a sixth grade teacher, and she will be having a child by the end of the summer. And I think that's it for all of the news of people coming and going.
Well, certainly wish Lindsay well, and I think we shouldn't accept Kathy Fahey's retirement. Keep her here. Make it easier.
It's going to be very hard to replace.
She is, she will be.
And she will be here to, she promised a report to the board on sort of the current status of technology and the number of, you know, the equipment we have and things like that. So, she will do that probably late July or early August.
Okay. Yeah, she was in...
Yes.
Tell us about the handoff, what she had planned, what she was...
And then student feedback forms. Mr. Seed, you want to come forward? This is in your packet. We've had several meetings about this. This is ongoing already. Mr. Morrison, you can pull up a chair, too. Mr. Seed is the outgoing CTA president.
This is it, right?
Mr. Morrison is the incoming CTA president.
Oh, congratulations.
Congratulations. Anyway, you took a look at this. We took all of this right off the DESE website. This is all DESE approved. Trying to think if there's anything in particular. Do you have any questions? You can ask it of any of us.
You know, I read through it. It looks excellent, and I think that it's going to be a step in the right direction in terms of getting feedback for what's going on in the classroom, because I think our constituents, that's our customer, our kids, and I think having feedback from those children has to us on that classroom going to make the experience better. So, I think seeing how that, you know, how we use it going down the road, I think is going to be really important. I think that certainly is the first step, using it and seeing if, you know, if there's any problems with it. It's the first step, and then I'd certainly like to be able to get some feedback vis-à-vis the administrators to see, not for any specific, but to find out how that feedback loop is working with the teachers in the district and going.
Yeah, we got started a little bit late on it.
Yes.
I think it was a little bit rushed. I know that a lot of people did the hard copy. There's also an electronic version, which I did use with my classes, which was kind of nice. You know, we wanted to get this started this year to accommodate the DESE requirement that we have for educator evaluation. We did select all the mini-forms for the DESE published. Some of them are probably the best, particularly for the younger students. But we did want to implement as soon as possible, and as you said, it is ongoing. So, we'll get a good idea of the feedback. You know, educators could use it to help inform their instruction and set goals. And then maybe at some point in the future, we could include that as part of the evaluation. But, you know, really, that's a piece of it, and maybe not so much part of the evaluation, where the administrators are really going to be spearheading the evaluation, being in the classrooms on a more consistent basis. They'll see some of those things as well.
I think most of the schools that have adopted these, and everyone adopted some form of it, probably in a year or two, they're changing it. From what I'm hearing, it's the same with DDMs. It's, you know, we're getting them done, and then after a year or two, you start to tweak them or do something a little different.
And you do have that option. I think the other piece of it that's difficult is the, you know, non-teaching professional staff.
Yes.
Because it's hard for a guidance counselor or a nurse, you know, you could have an exit slip, but what is the exit slip? You know, "Did you affix my Band-Aid?"
Yes.
"Did you send me home because I didn't feel well?" And so, you know, some of it's good feedback to get, others, particularly for the educators, I think it's, again, it helps to inform your instruction. And you may discuss it with your evaluator at the time of your summative evaluation.
Yep. And just to add, too, that another part of all of this is the staff survey. So, that's been completed in two of our schools. Later on this week, it'll be at Clinton High School. But that's also, right from the DESE, it's not really a union issue, if anything. It's trying to get feedback from the staff about the leadership of the school. So, it's been done already at the elementary and middle. They have analyzed it. They've sent them to me, and I've analyzed it, because every question is matched to the standards of what an administrator should be. So, and that's the same type of thing. We'll give the final results to each administrator. They will use it to set their goals for the future, and same really thing as the teachers are doing, so.
And I think if, you know, we're not looking for specific, but I think as a general report card, how things are going, both from, you know, leadership and obviously from the classroom.
You know, the other problem, one of the problems that we encountered was that, you know, we teach multiple groups, so the teachers are asking the same kids for feedback. So, they took it maybe four or five times, the same questionnaire survey for different teachers.
Yeah.
You know, maybe not the best model, something we can work on, but...
Well, it's a good first step.
Yeah, it's a good first step. It's a start. You've got to start at the beginning.
Yep. That's great.
As you did say, the new slate of officers, Mr. Morrison is the president, Robin Quist is the vice president, Donna Beck is again the secretary, Janet Carey, the treasurer, the building reps are at the high school, Amy Mason at the middle school, Brenda DeSessa, and Mary Ann Dobbins at the elementary school.
All right. And when do they officially take place? July 1?
July 1st.
July 1st.
It's good face time for it.
Did you run a tough campaign, Paul, to get this decision?
I'd like to thank Bob through the two or three years.
Three plus.
Three years, my first time going through negotiations, but I hope they're all that smooth going forward. Been leading us for the last three years, a great representative for the teachers.
And if I can throw in my two cents, what happened from, since the past, when there's an issue, Bob would send me a nasty email or come down and see me, but at least the first thing we do was sit down, and he would get my opinion about why I think this way, you know, it should go this way. I would hear him as to, you know, there would be no grievances. It would be first, "Let's talk." And sometimes grievances are good, because they clear the air, because none of us know exactly how it should all work out. And I think that's what we need to do in the future, is talk first.
We've been appreciative of your effort as well, Terry.
Yeah, well, we had a good time.
And I think it works better that way.
It does.
Agreed.
And my emails weren't that nasty.
Well, sometimes they were. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen.
I think you folks have to officially accept that, this model of...
Oh, well, can we have a motion to accept the DESE draft?
DESE student feedback.
So, are there any changes to the model that we're adopting?
No, it's all right here, so.
Well, I just, I want to say, I initially brought this up. I appreciate the willingness on the part of the association and the school district to come together. I agree with the chair. This is a commendable first step to adopt this opportunity, to get some feedback from students, to help inform instruction, to help inform programming. And I look forward to seeing how the implementation goes, and I'd like to make a motion that we accept this model.
All right, motion made. You have a second?
I'll second it.
Motion made and seconded. Any other discussion? There being none? All those in favor?
Thank you. That was one of my goals, too, to get this done.
Well done.
All right, back to you, Mr. Chairman.
Before we hear from the marketing subcommittee, and of course, Mrs. Sheridan isn't here, but she did pass on something from the town of Drake, but I was going to ask her more about it, but about school chargebacks and percentages. And I think that it seems to me, it's certainly that, and I have to say that she is, she's been a terrific asset to the district. She's continually reaching out to other districts to find out, you know, best practice, what they're doing, and how other districts handle various financial matters. So, in this particular case, it's the chargeback for positions within Town Hall that we pay a percentage of, and it seems implied by this that it is something that we should probably make sure we do on an annual basis, review all of them. Because it sounds to me that if, in fact, we're paying a higher percentage than we think we should, we can challenge it.
Yes.
And since it has to be signed by both parties, I think that it's really important that if we find that we're paying for something that doesn't seem fair, we should negotiate a different percentage.
And that's what we found out a year ago. I think it was actually more during the facility director
Right.
discussion, that I had never signed any agreement, no ever assignment.
It's gone on for a long time, but I think it's due time.
The time charges us, what they feel like is the right thing to do, I guess.
So, maybe what we could do, I could suggest, is that we get this document from Town Hall and maybe review it and then make it an action item for our first meeting in September, that you sit down with Mike Ward, you can review the numbers and see if they make sense or not make sense. We're scratching our heads going, gee, we're paying 60% of something that we really don't avail ourselves of. Or maybe it's all terrific, but I think we should absolutely look at it and have you sit down with him and then give us the feedback. So, maybe that first meeting in September, that would be okay.
What is the timeline as to when we get the numbers of what our chargebacks are, as to when they close the books, that we could actually go down?
I imagine we're in the middle of it like now, so we'd have to start talking about it for the action.
For next budget. So, I think that I'd rather get ahead of it than the, you know, everybody starts going through that funnel at a certain point. I think if we can get ahead of it and have a good feel for it, then we should have a good chance of kind of looking. If it's something that we, that we're going to contend, then we need to have enough time to do it.
Rather than Karen went home sick.
Oh, I'm sorry. But anyway, I just, I was going to ask her. I appreciated her giving this to me, and I think that, again, she's to be commended for continually looking how other districts do things financially and how they handle various items, and which is always terrific and things that we would not be aware of at all. So, she always shows great initiative value. So, the marketing subcommittee, do you have anything for us?
A little bit, not too much, because as everyone knows, the last couple weeks were probably like the busiest of the year, between graduation and all the different events that we're going to, and teachers and everyone's involved in. So, but we did have two things. We got four volunteers that reached out to join the subcommittee team with us, so I'll be getting in touch with them. They're Mike Garofoli, Paul Morrison, Terry helped me with pronunciation if I mess up these names.
Nicole Malone.
Malone and Julie Perouse.
Perouse.
Okay. So, that's great. That's, so that brings us up to seven. I did, I was able to talk with Mr. Morrison. One of my action items was to get a list of resources, both like students in the digital media program and available equipment and things like that, just to kind of start a baseline, compare that to some of the events that we want to try to do in the next couple of years, to see if there's any gaps, anything we need to add to it to be able to handle the workload. So, I have that information. I'll be sharing that at our next meeting. And we will, I don't know if, how this will work, Terry. I know I would like to meet with Mike Ward, but I don't know if we have to do it like under the context of like an official marketing subcommittee meeting, but I know the town has shown interest in being involved in this. So, I mean, I'll talk to you offline about the best way to handle that, but I'd like to get together with him, too, just to start to better define what the town's role is going to be in this, because they have shown interest in helping us out. So, that's it.
Now, do we have to, Robert, like accept those four new members of the subcommittee? Or is that just they volunteered to come? The two that approached me are both in the marketing field, and they thought it might be interesting to jump in.
I know Nicole.
Yeah, and Mike has always been interested. Mike Garofoli and Paul, we talked about through his digital media and the students, so I don't know if they have to be officially accepted. Is this subcommittee part of the school committee, sort of, or...
It is a subcommittee of the school committee.
Well, the procedures say that you have to accept any appointments of any committee. That's your role as a chair to appoint. So, if you want to appoint, you need to appoint.
Yeah, I have no issue with those individuals. I don't know if we have to vote on it collectively, but I don't have a issue with that.
Listen to yourself, appoint yourself.
So, unless we have to take a vote, I have no...
Okay, all right. So, that's fine. Thank you.
Oh, moving right along.
Yes, a question. So, can we set up a meeting then?
Yes.
When do we set up a meeting? You know, for the, when you talk with Mike Ward, maybe set up a meeting now?
We can do that.
Or we set it else, we can have one officially? Maybe we can have it at the Town Hall?
We should contact those four people and say, "You're official," and then maybe have a meeting, or maybe even a meeting first with them, and then all of us head up to the Town Hall once we set something up, and we'll sit with Mike or something.
Yep. Good work.
We have a good, almost a month before the next school committee meeting, so we definitely get something done by then.
Excellent.
All right.
Robert, I think we're...
Old business. Is there any old business? I don't, there's any old business.
Oh, yes, no.
I don't know if there's any new business either.
The new business, why don't I just, just, so people, I think tomorrow, Jan, is the article in the newspaper from the state, so I thought I'd give everyone a heads up before we begin, just quickly. I certainly don't think it's the end of the world, but it's 32 either schools or districts were identified by the state for their suspension and expulsion records of students. We've had very, very few, if any, expulsions, but Clinton High was named. Again, some of these are complete districts, and what happened is, this is not dealing with this year or last year's material, it's two years ago. And somebody down in Malden, who's looking for something to do, is my guess, has to analyze these things. And they seem to think that we tend to suspend special education students more than the norm. And so, I mean, it's not a, it's not really that big of a deal. It just means that they're going to work with these 32 districts or schools to help find new and better ways to address when students break the rules or whatever. But I think it's going to hit the paper tomorrow and the telegram. Around here, Clinton High School is one school. Fitchburg is Fitchburg High and one of the middle schools. Gardner is the entire district. Lowell is Lowell High School. Quabog is the high school only. There's several. I think there's 10 charter schools here as well. So, it's a numbers game, and apparently they, you know, so they're going to help us to identify if there is an issue. I think the big thing will be, if they look at the next year's issues, I think next year's numbers or this year's numbers, if they're not anything like from two years ago, then the problem is automatically solved and nothing happens. But the thought, all they're saying now is, they want to address this, call those schools together. Mr. Hastings or Mrs. Cash would probably attend meetings from these other schools as well with the state to talk about new and better ways to discipline children. So, anyway, but before you read into the paper... Some of these numbers were from the other schools, were for students of color or something like that, where they found something that was out of whack percentage-wise. So they're calling it students of color or disabilities, but I don't think that students of color is an issue with us, but it might be the disabilities. So we're going to find out more about it, but you'll read it in the paper.
So if I may, Mr. Chairman, so, because it's interesting, so it's out-of-school suspensions we're talking about.
I think it's mostly out-of-school suspensions.
Not just kids, not...
That's the article, if you want to read it a day before.
Right. Because we, because some schools, we just mark the kids absent and don't put down a school suspension.
Oh, yes, yes.
So there's a lot of...
Yes, there's a lot of...
Ways to manipulate the system so it doesn't look bad.
Absolutely, yes.
So that's what we need to...
Fitchburg superintendent told me that sometimes, especially in the students of color, you're not supposed to ask what, you know, culture or nationality or whatever a student is. So sometimes it just, they're misidentified, and you say a student is African-American when maybe they're not. And if there's too much of that going on, suddenly the numbers pop up and they say, wow, you're suspending more of this type of kid than this type of kid. So they're going to give us a chance to explain our numbers, and if they feel that's good, then that's the end of that. If we're doing something wrong, they're going to provide the training so that we'll make it right.
Are they...
Did you say that was two years ago?
I think it was two years ago.
I already know where it was. I haven't seen this report yet, but our numbers have changed drastically.
This one, this one, same.
But, you know, everything's a clear...
Yeah. So they've been in touch with me. I keep forwarding them to you, and we'll see what happens. It's really not a big deal. It's not a, I just, you have to keep the numbers in line.
Mm-hmm. It's good to know. Is there any public comment?
You have a student need that form. Do you have, are you planning on getting a parent feedback?
We haven't.
No? We probably could work that out. The DESE regulations don't happen to mention that, but, I mean, we could do that.
Perhaps, perhaps the PTA could...
Help us out some...
Take a lead on that.
I'd be more than happy to.
I think that wouldn't be a bad thing. I mean, obviously...
Yeah.
Or the school district, or...
You're talking about parents here.
The parents...
Parents having a feedback form.
Having a feedback.
On the school district in general, how things are going, what we do right, what we do wrong?
That's kind of broad. I think that most parents are specifically thinking about how their year flowed, and maybe they could, like, have a say, have a way of saying, like, if they felt like they got, like, information well, or if, you know...
But you're not talking about individual teachers, or what did my...
Well, I just think it will help also to see if there's a teacher that is having the same issue over and over. If they're not a good communicator, and their parents are frustrated, want to be here, they're not going to get a good rating at the end of the year anyways.
Why don't we work on that and get, maybe get the CTA involved, too, and I'm sure we could develop something.
Yeah.
There's probably something out there already.
But I mean, there's many ways you could do it broad at first and then, you know, break it down, but I don't know. I think parents would like to have a little bit of feedback or back into the school system. I think it's great that the students get to do that, definitely. But I think that parents, we, it's bounced around before. I mean, PTA, we've done surveys in the past, and so let's see if that, sometimes you have, you know, great participation, and other times it's, you know, not so great, but it does help guide you a little bit. I don't think that it's meant to criticize everything, but I think that, I think it would be a tool to help...
No, I'm all for that, as long as it doesn't criticize, like, any, like, you know, one teacher or whatever. Criticize me is fine, but I meant it shouldn't be something where my teacher this year, you know, didn't do this, or my teacher didn't do that.
Well, I don't think it needs to get into the meeting pretty, but I think that, you know, upon a whole...
Yeah.
The whole year.
How are we doing? And are we informing you of what's going on?
No, because, I mean, everyone has their strengths and their weaknesses, self-improvement. So I would say that, you know, but it would be, it would be, I think it would be great. I think parents would want to do that.
Tomorrow, I'll start looking at some maybe DESE parent surveys. They must have some already...
Right. I mean, we don't have to reinvent the wheel. I'm sure it's been done somewhere.
We could look at it. Terry?
And I would say that, depending on how it's developed, it would be a far more positive way of finding out what's going on versus when we find people have left the district and they're reluctant to fill out a form. I think that if it's a consistently used piece of communication, if we sample our parents on a regular basis over time, there should be some relationship. If we see people are leaving, there's probably a relationship between that feedback, because we don't get good feed...
But if you're a teacher that's really doing something really well, and it's really worked well, then why can't we share that?
Right. So, anyway, but I think that's something you can work out with the, between the superintendent and the CTA and come up with something that doesn't step on anybody's toes and keeps it. So it's useful information, but...
Right.
The schools don't currently do customer satisfaction surveys at the end of the year?
I don't think we've ever done anything like...
We don't do a survey tied to school improvement plan goals or district improvement plan goals?
No, I don't think we've ever done one.
There's been the DESE survey.
Right.
Well, it's true.
All the parents involved in that.
Right. Well, parents that have high school connections.
That was high school only.
Right.
Yeah, I know, I've never filled out a survey.
Yeah. Well, it sounds like there's an opportunity there.
All right. But we'll start, we'll start with the DESE, see if they have something.
All right. Before I ask for a vote to go into executive session, since we will not convene, why don't we pause the meeting?
Well, I'll certainly cut the cake, but I did want to make a public comment.
Oh, okay.
And that was just to, kudos, I don't think we give enough credit to our graduation ceremony. It is just a shining example of the Clinton Public School District.
Yes, it was a fun, it was a fun...
I mean, the people that came up to us at the 50th class reunion, just in awe...
Yes.
At the professionalism and just the student behavior and how very well-run that graduation day is.
Yes.
And of course, we were blessed with another sunny day in the park, so that's always nice, too. But just kudos to everybody that contributes to that day. It's really a wonderful day.
It's a class act.
It really is.
It, you always feel very proud of the kids, and I'm always really impressed, you know, the way they speak and handle themselves, and, you know, it's just a very...
Well, let's get the next round.
Really?
I think it's cake time.
Yes, it's cake time.
Rob, before we get to the cake, I would also just like to say, I'd like to thank everyone and the parents, everyone that showed up at the town meeting. I thought we had a lot of support there.
Yes, that's true.
I was, I was, I was very pleased, you know, that stuff doesn't happen easy. There, sometimes there's people behind the scenes really trying to, we have motivated families. I think it shows at the meeting. They're interested, they really want to help out, and they're, they were definitely felt at that, at that meeting, at some of the issues that were important to the school. Anyone that was there can attest to that. It was, I was very happy with that, so I just want to send a thank you out to the support that we had at the recent town meeting.
And if I may just add to that, that, you know, to be a vibrant and functioning school district, it's okay to have opposition. It's okay to have people question the work that we do, the work that your team does from an administrative perspective. And I don't, I don't think we should be afraid of that, and I just, I would like to continue to welcome those that stand in opposition to the work that we're trying to do, to come be part of these meetings, be present, make comments, add your feedback to the conversation.
That's a good point. I think I've made comments to people that I think that, as a board, I think we are very open to comment. We don't stick to Robert's rules of order, and people that have a comment and want to participate in our meetings, we've always allowed people to participate and absolutely encourage people to. And I think, you know, in light of the fact that our budget at this point now has been delineated on a level that never has been before, if someone really has a question as to what we're spending and what we're spending it on, it's all there, and it can be discussed, and it's all visible to the public. And I think that we would certainly welcome the people to come in and they have input when we're formulating budget or spending money on various items. If they have a question as to the validity or the rationale behind it, they should absolutely be here. And it's the one thing of social media which I dislike, is conversations that go on behind the scenes. I mean, they're not, the opinions are worthwhile, it's just they're not productive. If you come here and come to a meeting, it could be productive, because then we could do the research to find out if there's something behind it, and if there's something we can do differently, we would, but I, it's much better to have it here, because then we can actually, it's much more of a fair process to have a give and take in a meeting versus electronic. Anyway. As well as one of your last official acts, you'll be the cake cutter.
Okay. Great.
So, so why don't we take a pause before we do the...
Pause, okay.
Because then, because once we go into executive session, I think we have to go.
Pause to cut the cake. And then go into the session.
Yes.
All right. So we just need to go into executive session?
Yes, we do.
All right.
All right. Hope everybody had a good sugar rush. It was good.
I hope they enjoyed their cake, and they do, too.
Yes. So, under chapter 30A, section 21 of the national law, it's open meeting law, the committee will enter into executive session to discuss contract negotiations. The committee will not reconvene. Local vote.
Joel Bates, aye.
Tina Zapanta, aye.
Ed Devault, aye.
See, I recuse myself from the vote.
Yes, you may. Robert, that's an aye. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to text you. It's going to be...